Good afternoon. This is Kathleen Drew, Chair of the Washington State Energy Facility Site Evaluation Council, bringing our special meeting of Wednesday, November 29th to order. Ms. Grant them, will you call the role for the Horse Heaven Council?
Certainly. Department of Commerce.
Elizabeth Osborne, present.
Department of Ecology.
Eli Levitt, present.
Department of Fish and Wildlife.
Mike Livingston, present.
Department of Natural Resources.
Lenny Young, present.
Utilities and Transportation Commission.
Stacy Brewster, present.
The Local Government and Optional State Agency for Benton County, Ed Brost.
I do understand that Mr. Brost is present, so I'll just mark him as present on the air. And then for council staff, I will be calling those who might be speaking today, Sonya Bumbus. Amy Hoffgemeyer.
Present.
Amy Moon.
Amy Moon, present.
Sean Green.
Sean Green, present.
We have a quorum, and that is everybody. Drew, you are on mute. Thank you. Council members, before you is the proposed agenda. Is there a motion to approve the proposed agenda?
Lenny Young, so moved.
Second.
Mike Livingston, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. I do want to make a note today to everybody who's participating. Thank you very much for your attention and interest in this project. Our meeting for today is really a work session for the council to ask questions of the technical staff about the final EIS. So we will not be having the chat on today. We will be just taking questions from council members. And first on our agenda is the final EIS presentation. Mr. Sean Green.
Thank you. Let me see if I can get the presentation started here.
Yeah, I'm on.
Are you all seeing the presentation now?
I am, but I don't. Yes, we are. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, so as Chair Drew mentioned, this is kind of the the second half of the intended to be the second half of the discussion for council members about the EIS recommendation, recommended mitigation for the Horse Heaven project. This will be similar to our last meeting earlier this month, and that we'll go through the mitigation measures and be available to answer any council questions or concerns. The difference this time is that we have subject matter experts from other state agencies, as well as FSX consultant WSP present to provide more more technical answers. Before we get to the mitigation, though, I wanted to follow up on two outstanding questions from our previous meeting. The first being from Mr. Young, who asked if the determination to reduce speed limits on site from 25 miles an hour to 15 miles an hour was based on specific data calculations, or just a general understanding that lower speeds will result in fewer fugitive dust emissions. I did want to clarify that fugitive dust emissions modeling was not performed at the 25 mile per hour and 15 mile per hour rates, but existing research, which has been placed on the council library for your perusal, if you are interested, would suggest that about that a 10 mile per hour reduction should result in approximately 20% fewer dust emissions from vehicle traffic. The second outstanding question was regarding culvert installation BMPs, again, from Mr. Young. And the question was, how did the USDA BMPs that were indicated in the mitigation compared and how those BMPs compared to the WDFW BMPs? The WDFW BMPs meet or exceed all recommendations within the USDA BMPs. And if the council would prefer, we can modify the mitigation to mandate that the applicant adhere to the WDFW BMPs in lieu of the USDA BMPs. And that's something that we can work out after this meeting, if that's the desire.
Thanks, Mr. Young.
Yeah, thanks, Sean. Really appreciate the follow up on both those items. On the first item, where it says the 15 mile per hour speed limit is expected to reduce dust emissions by 20%, about 20%, is that compared to 25 or compared to some other higher higher rate of speed?
It's compared to 25. Existing research suggests about a 20% reduction for every 10 miles per hour reduced in the speed limit.
Thank you.
Any other questions here? Okay. And again, before we get to the mitigation, this is a reminder both to the council and to our subject matter experts that specifically wildlife and cultural resource discussions as part of as part of this meeting may involve reference to confidential information, including the maps provided to the council under separate cover alongside the final EIS. However, this meeting and its recording will be publicly available. So to ensure that the the trust that was placed on us with the sharing of this data is not breached, and to maintain the security of the data, confidential information should not be directly discussed during this meeting, but it can be referenced indirectly, and council members can refer other council members to areas of the maps that they have jointly access to. So saying something like turbine X is a concern because it is one mile away from a frugus hawk nest is something that we would like to avoid in this meeting, but saying more general geographic scale statements like the turbines along the ridge are more likely to impact the frugus hawk would be would be fine. So with that, we can start on our walls of text. So the first wildlife mitigation measure defines the post-construction bird and bat fatality monitoring program and outlines the specifics of the monitoring and management programs and the role of the Technical Advisory Committee Committee, which I'll refer to as TAC from here on. This mitigation measure is intended to allow for continued monitoring and operation phase wildlife mortalities of wildlife mortalities and allow for adaptive management. Are there any council questions regarding this mitigation measure? Okay. Wildlife 2 is a requirement.
Hang on a second, Mr. Young.
Yeah, sorry. Could you go back to the
Yes.
Just starting to read the text in the first sub-bullet. It says, prior initiation of the operation, the applicant would develop in coordination with the Technical Advisory Committee and approved, et cetera. What is the Technical Advisory Committee's specific role? Do they do they share the responsibility for developing the the monitoring program, or are they consulted? Do they do a sort of a pre-review before it comes to the council? What is the Technical Advisory Committee's specific role?
Sure. So the Technical Advisory Committee is composed of technical experts from state agencies, as well as independent biologists and locals in the area who have a specific knowledge of of the land and potential concerns. And their role is to essentially serve as FSX technical experts for the development and management of a variety of mostly wildlife plans and vegetation plans that the applicant will be developing. So they the applicant is intended to develop these plans in coordination with the Technical Advisory Committee, who will then provide the the finished plans to FSX for approval, along with any specific guidance or knowledge that the Technical Advisory Committee has that is relevant.
So so the term in coordination is a little ambiguous. Who is actually a responsibility responsible for the soundness and the good quality of the monitoring program? Is that the applicant's responsibility, or is that a shared responsibility between the applicant and the TAC?
Ms. Moon?
Oh, thank you. I was just going to point out that mitigation measure Habitat 4, it outlines that what the Technical Advisory Committee is, as well as the pre-operational Technical Advisory Group. And I don't think that Sean has a slide on that, but the the TAC would be working in consultation with FSX and the applicant, and there would be agreed upon members to that TAC. And that it's it's ultimately the let's see if I could find the the right words here, but but do you want to know like who could be the representatives on there? Or was your question just on who was going to have the ultimate approval?
Well, really neither. I guess what I'm asking is would the does the creation of a TAC shift or remove or reduce any level of responsibility from the applicant for creating a good monitoring program?
Oh, I oh, Sean, you can answer that.
Yeah, I would say no. Ultimately, whether or not the plan is sufficient is made, that determination is made by FSX. If, in our opinion, the the plan is not sound, then we can send it back to the applicant with changes that we we need to see in a finalized version. Ultimately, the point, the purpose of the TAC is to essentially get that process started earlier in terms of making sure that the plans are are sound and sufficient to address the potential concerns before that gets to FSX and a decision is made. The TAC is not intended to be a decision-making body by any means. It is just kind of a extra level of review.
Okay, I don't want to hang us up at this point, but maybe when we get to if we get to today, or when's the right time? If we get to a specific description of the TAC and its responsibilities, might pick up some of these questions again. But thanks for thanks for what you've shared so far.
Yeah, and like Amy Moon said, that that is in our have for mitigation measure, which is part of this presentation, depending on time. I think we should be able to get to that today, at least.
And I would just add to this from our own experience at FSX. For example, there was an issue that came up at Wild Horse. I can't remember what it was. But the the TAC had disagreed about some issue. It came to staff, and then the staff actually brought that forward to the council in terms of identifying the the response to to that. So within our own work on technical advisory committees in the past, the staff are very much involved in monitoring. We're taking listening to the advice. But there are different points along the way that that work would also come to the council for for review. Mr. Livingston?
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering, so I wasn't able to make the, you know, the monthly meeting, last meeting, and didn't I I'm just not sure how how this is going to unfold for today. And I'm just wondering if you guys could back up for a second and just explain how we're going to interact both with staff as well as the subject matter experts. When do we, you know, what if if as Sean's going through here, there's we have something else that we want to discuss? When do we interject that? And just kind of a lay of the land for today's meeting. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure, I think council members are are welcome to ask questions of subject matter experts and staff at any point that they they feel it's relevant. This presentation is meant for the council's benefit, so if you want to address matters earlier or or wait until there's an applicable mitigation on the screen, it's entirely up to you. Our subject matter experts are, I believe, all present, so we are prepared to address any questions.
Would you introduce the subject matter experts, please, Sean?
Sure. I I don't have a list of them. I don't know if Amy Hoffgemeyer or Amy Moon might.
Well, I have a short list. I might accidentally leave somebody out. But from Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, there's Mike Mike Ritter, Jason Fedora, and James Watson. And then we have our support from FSX Contractor Consultants, WSP, is there's Jeremy Paris, Kevin Rao, Kate Moss, and Marlis Musial. And if I butchered your name, I'm sorry, Marlis. And then there's also Sierra. I'm not sure if I missed anyone. I don't know if you if Amy or Sean, if you see anyone that I missed, add them in.
And and the ones from our contractor are ones who have worked specifically on the final EIS with us and with the other experts on the on the final EIS on the subject specifically, wildlife and habitat visual. Oh, then there's Sierra. Go ahead, Sierra.
Yes, sorry. We also have Kirby Lastinger here from WSP. So I just wanted to make sure we had a full roll call.
Thank you. Thank you. So as to the question, yes, if you'd like to I mean, you can see if you will, I think it would make sense to talk about the specific mitigation as it comes up, but if you have a broader issue right now that you want to bring up, the council can certainly do that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. Are there any further questions at this point?
Are you? Okay, are you? And are you now taking up the whole slide here on posts on bird and bat adaptive management, strategy and development, and the monitoring program? Sean?
Yeah, yes. Are there any any more questions about this mitigation measure? And I I understand it's lengthy, so I don't expect everybody to read through it right now. It's much of the length is is attributable to the the level of detail and specifics about the the survey and management programs. But if there are no more questions about this measure, we can move on.
Let's 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 wait for just a minute because it is a meaty one to start off. We didn't have any practice ones, right? So
And I do apologize. A number of specifically the wildlife mitigation measures are pretty lengthy just due to the due to the the detail inherent in them.
Mr. Livingston?
Yeah, thank you. Maybe maybe I will. I'm going to put one of one of DFW's experts on the spot for a moment. I'd like to ask Mike Ritter, given that he's been in the renewable energy position for a number of years now for the department. How did the I would like to ask you, Mr. Ritter, how the how this mitigation program that it's proposed here compares to some of the others on the other wind farms in Washington State? What's your experience with how those work? Just, you know, just some general thoughts related to this, you know, bats and bird collisions and the fatalities and all the the different studies that have been done over the years from my perspective. We have, we have a lot of information on that, but how does this program that's being proposed for this project, if it's approved, compared to some of those others that you're familiar with, if you don't mind?
Thank you, Chair Drew and Council Livingston. This particular bird and bat monitoring plan is probably the best. We about a, I don't know, months ago, reviewed the initial bird and bat monitoring plan. I think it was specifically related to bats. And we wrote a comment letter to FSX, and much of the language you see in this right here came out of that letter. So the curtailments, the fatality numbers, the triggers, the monitoring of three years over a five-year period that need not be consecutive. Curtailments, the recent literature cited is was all in that letter. So this particular one is using the best available science and information to understand the fatalities for bats, which is this is really specific to bats. The bird fatality monitoring industry-wide has been pretty consistent. And the ones I saw here for this project are also consistent with what's been done in the state and for industry.
Thank you. That's really helpful. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And I would add, council members, as we look at the recommended mitigation, and our next step will be what our recommendation is to the governor and to have that conversation. But part of what we will do with the mitigation is it will become part of if a recommendation to approve the project in some form is recommended to the governor, this type of mitigation will be in our site certification agreement. The site certification agreement is signed by the applicant and the governor. So the level of specificity that we're talking about here will be legally binding. With that, any other questions for this on the or comments or thoughts on this particular slide?
Okay. Then we will move to the next batch of mitigation measures. So Wildlife 2 is a requirement that all trash containers be wildlife resistant on the project site. Wildlife 3 requires that the applicant supply FSX with a summary of their consultation with US Fish and Wildlife regarding eagle mortality, so that we can develop adaptive management measures if necessary. And Wildlife 4 bars the use of pesticides unless the applicant develops a management plan, additional mitigation, and receives SSEC approval. This measure is intended to help avoid impacts for both prey species like rodents, as well as the species that predate upon them. Are there any questions on these measures? Okay. Next is Wildlife 5, which requires that sensitive areas like wildlife colonies and nests be flagged as exclusion zones. If and when encroachment upon those zones would be required, the applicant would need to develop additional mitigation and receive FSX approval before that encroachment occurs. And Wildlife 6 would result in the development and maintenance of a road mortality database throughout the construction and operation phases of the project. For areas or periods with with frequent mortality, the applicant would need to develop additional mitigation, such as signage or temporary road closures, and to see receive approval by SSEC prior to implementation. Are there any questions on these measures? Wildlife 7 states that construction activities should be limited to daytime hours when feasible to reduce disturbance to nocturnal species. Wildlife 8 implements a quarter-mile buffer around all known raptor nests where wind turbines would not be allowed to be constructed without FSX approval and the preparation of a monitoring and management plan. And Wildlife 9 would exclude vegetation clearing and grubbing within bird breeding periods when feasible and require additional mitigation if such clearing occurs during those periods. If avoidance was not feasible. Are there any questions on these measures?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so this number eight, I'm curious about. Let's see here. One moment. I'm going to process this in my head before we move on. So the buffer, this is just strictly during the construction phase. Is that right, Sean? I'm trying to figure out exactly where this this buffer zone for all-known raptor nests would apply. And I know there's there's separate requirements for frugus hawks. So we're talking about other raptors, including burrowing owls, I assume, red-tailed hawks, prairie falcons, these other species that we're we know are in the the project area. Can you just explain this one a little bit more to me?
Sure. So this would, this is intended to primarily focus on where project components are cited, specifically wind turbines. And it would create a quarter-mile buffer around all-known raptor nests and require that all wind turbines be placed outside of that buffer, unless there is prior approval by FSX specifically for those those turbines that would encroach upon the buffer in concert with the development of a monitoring and management plan.
Okay, so I would like to ask, and I'm not sure who to, I could send this to Mr. Watson, perhaps. What he would recommend for burrowing owls for a buffer, if a quarter mile would be adequate from his perspective?
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity to join in. This might be a better question for Jason. A quarter mile is fairly large and adequate, I would say, for burrowing owls based on general habitat use. But again, that might be something we need to take a closer look at. Jason, I don't know if you have any comments on that.
Sure. Well, you know, this is a quarter mile. And usually this kind of buffer applies to construction buffers, so you're avoiding disturbance to nesting raptor or nest site. With turbine, applying it to wind turbines seems a little unusual because it's actually a mortality cause that extends beyond construction. And then, of course, you know, I'm grappling with understanding this one, too, and so apologies. I think a quarter mile would be suitable for avoiding disturbance during a construction period for burrowing owls and other. I think we do have greater buffers for some other raptors that are typically used. But, you know, that isn't going to result in reduced mortality after construction when the home ranges and foraging areas of these nesting raptors will exceed a quarter mile. If that's helpful. So I think a quarter mile is a sufficient standard construction buffer to avoid disturbance. But there could be impacts beyond nest disturbance during construction.
Are I guess my question would be, are there other projects that require buffer zones around turbines for the raptors we're talking about here?
I personally not too familiar with the other how the other wind projects may that might be better for Mike Ritter.
Or perhaps for our technical. Go ahead. Go ahead, Mike.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to jump in, but thank you. The only buffers I'm aware of are related to, let's say, perhaps golden eagle nest areas. But I can't recall any others or other raptors in the state.
So, thank you. Yeah, so this mitigation measure goes beyond what others currently do right now.
I believe the point two-five miles is in a document prepared by WDFW and it's specifically related to construction disturbance near an active raptor nest. And as Jason alluded to, it has nothing to do with mortality.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Young.
Yeah, is, is, what's the acronym PTAG? Is that another acronym for the same technical advisory group or is that a different group?
Yeah, sorry, that's in a later mitigation measure, but is the pre-tech, pre-construction, or pardon me, pre-operational technical advisory group and its role is roughly synonymous with the technical advisory committee. It's just as the the TAC is defined in existing literature, it can only be in operation post-construction, but we needed that technical expertise available to EFSEC prior to construction for for some of these citing monitoring and management plans.
Okay, so one, one technical advisory groups in place pre-construction, then that group goes away and it's replaced by another similar group?
Correct. And we we imagine that the composition will will probably be very similar, if not exactly the same.
Thank you.
And I did want to add specific to the concern about burning owls. They, there, there is specific mitigation for that species later on in this presentation and within the EIS that addresses buffers and potential impacts more, more so than this measure here.
Thank you. Any other comments? On slide six, seven, seven. Questions? Ms. Brewster.
Hi, regarding number nine and the definition of feasible, who does EFSEC or the applicant determine whether it's not feasible to clear, just do the grubbing?
Generally, that would be a conversation between the the applicant EFSEC and the, in this case, pre-technical advisory group. It would, it would be a definition that's kind of developed as appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions on this slide? And now we are into the habitat mitigation. This first measure, Habitat 1, would require the applicant to locate all project components outside of modeled movement corridors, specifically corridors modeled as medium to very high linkage by the Washington Wildlife Habitat Connectivity Working Group. And if components do need to be cited within these areas, the applicant would need to prepare a corridor mitigation plan in concert with the the PTAG and receive EFSEC approval prior to the deciding of any components. Other questions here? Mr. Young.
Has a simple overlay analysis been done to overlay the those corridors on the project plan and assess what proportion or what parts of the intended build-out would be precluded by this recommendation?
It has been. I don't have that map up on my screen right now, but I don't know if Kate Moss from WSP has a idea of what proportion of the project was within corridors that were modeled as medium to very high linkage?
I would need to go back and look for numbers. We did overlay the project on top of corridors. We did the calculation in terms of the impact of the corridors, but not the other way around, how much the project would be altered due to the due to avoiding corridors. There are features that bisect corridors. There's one specifically that runs north-south.
So is that information that's just not available today or is that in the EIS or was that just not done at all?
So calculating how much the project footprint would change to avoid the corridors wasn't done.
What, what, I guess, like a simple example would be what what proportion of the turbines or how many turbines would be eliminated if the prohibition of citing turbines within the medium to high linkage corridors was applied?
No, that analysis wasn't done.
Okay, thanks.
Is this a overlay that is in the final EIS? Is it one of the confidential documents the council has received? Is there a place where we can find this particular overlay?
It's, it's not a confidential document. I believe it is within chapters, chapter 3.6 or 4.6 within the EIS. I know I've seen the figure, so I imagine it was included in the EIS, but I can't say that for certain at this moment.
If if this is an analysis that would be appropriate at this point or possible for staff to carry out, to overlay the modeled corridors medium to very high linkage on the project plan and produce description of what proportion of the project as proposed would be impacted, that that would be useful to me. But again, I don't want to ask for this if it's not appropriate for this to be done at this step in our process or or it would be just something that would otherwise be not feasible to do.
I think that at this point, if there is a visual overlay, I think the first step for us would be to look at that. So I'm sorry, it looks like my computer is going to be patched about now, so I may disappear. But if the staff can identify that that map, that overlay, and let the council know where it is, then I know that in preparing for the December 20th meeting, staff is going to reach out and talk to council members and we can find out what what is feasible between now and then. We have a comment by Jason Fedora.
Yeah, apologies, I did, I believe it's in the document, figure 3.6 dash 2 is the overlay of the corridors.
Thank you for that. Can we see if we can make that available? Mr. Livingston.
One thing that I want to make sure you understand is so in the, in the final EIS, figure 2.2 dash 6 on 2 dash 39, we have the map that shows the different levels of impact, class zero through three. The way I understand it, the movement corridors were not one of the impact impacted resources that was considered within that analysis, if that, I just want to confirm my understanding there.
I don't know if movement quarters were incorporated into that figure or not. Sierra, do you know one way or the other?
Yes, I believe they were, but I can double check in the next five minutes just to confirm with our GIS analysts, but I do believe that those corridors were involved in the rating of those impacts.
Okay, and I believe Councilman Young, that is that what you were asking for then?
Yeah, I did. I just was what I, and not, not at this point making any kind of a judgment about this mitigation recommendation. I just would like to know if this recommendation was applied that there could be no project components within medium to very high linkage movement corridors, what proportion of the project would be essentially taken out by the application of this recommendation?
Again, to verify, so I have it in front of me now. So for wildlife impacts, impacts are based on the following thresholds. So we indicated intersection within a two-mile buffer around the fruginus hawk nests or intersection within migratory corridor classes of high or very high for wildlife impacts. So again, on those figures referenced in chapter two, there are a series of impacts that were used to provide those impact classes. And again, just, just to reiterate, the wildlife impacts were impacts based on a two-mile buffer around the fruginus hawk nests and intersections within migratory corridor, migratory corridor classes of high or very high.
Okay, so the figures in chapter two are inclusive of wildlife corridors. That's the figure you're looking at right now on your screen.
Is that class three impact? Is that class two impact?
So the way that the class of impacts were defined is whether that turbine location would would result in a high level of impact to a number of resources. So any place more than class one could potentially have a corridor component. But the figure in chapter three, which you're now seeing on your screen, any place that is highlighted in yellow or orange or red are corridors that were classed as medium or above in terms of linkage. And I don't think we have, we actually counted the number of turbines that are within those areas, but this does give a visual representation of of what areas of the project would potentially be excluded by this mitigation measure.
Yep, just just interested in looking at it both ways. And in one way that I think is depicted here, it assumes the turbines would be built and then the impacts are characterized. The other way of looking at it is assuming that the corridors are sacrosanct and that nothing would be built within them. So what, what's the impact on the project infrastructure at that point? And it'd be useful to have both of those complementary assessments to to address this topic.
Yeah, I fully understand the desire there. That's something that we can look at and see if it's something that can be prepared for the next council meeting. I don't know how much time that might take, but we'll look into it for sure.
Thank you.
And just as a note, I have a WA-Tech patch that's going to shut off my computer in 25 minutes. So if I disappear, that's why. Okay, any further questions on Habitat 1? All right, moving along. Habitat 2 would minimize transmission line crossings of canyons and draws with additional mitigation and EFSEC approval necessary if such crossings are required. And Habitat 3 requires that temporary lay-down yards avoid all impacts to shrub step habitat with additional mitigation and EFSEC approval again being required if such impacts are required. Other questions here?
Let's take a little bit to absorb this. Questions from council members? Ms. Osborne?
Thank you, Chair. I, I think I could use a little help understanding in Habitat 2 what the sequence of events would be if if EFSEC would approve the final transmission layout. Where, where would that fit in time? It seems sort of like there could be an iterative problem here where you know, the the transmission line layout would change the project composition and then need to be looked at again. And I guess I'm just wanting to understand that process a little bit better.
Sure. And when it comes to final project design, it's, it's going to be an iterative process for any components. And this would be no different there. When the applicant is at a point where they believe they know where the transmission line crossing or transmission line transmission lines would like to be cited, if there are any that cross canyons or draws, they would need to inform EFSEC of that desire and we would or EFSEC would make a determination about whether that crossing is is necessary or if there is a feasible alternate route where that that crossing would be avoided. And if the crossing does, is the the necessary route, then we would work with the applicant to develop additional mitigation measures.
Okay, so just to clarify, we look at at each potential site individually or crossing?
Yes, and anytime that the transmission line is crossing is proposed, we would look at that, that one in isolation.
Okay, that's helpful.
Any further questions on on these two? Okay. This is another lengthy one, but Habitat 4 outlines the creation of the pre-technical advisor, pre-operational technical advisory group and technical advisory committee. And includes guidance on determining membership, determining roles and assigning responsibilities for the pre-construction, construction, operation and decommissioning phases of the project. And I'll give you some time to to read through this and offer any questions that you have. Yes, Mr. Young.
How would these groups be funded? How would the participation of the various organizations personnel be paid for?
So I don't know if Amy or Anya Hoffmer have better knowledge than me, but I know that some element of it comes through our contracted relationships with other state agencies. And then when it comes to independent biologists or applicant representatives, those are funded by, those can be funded by the applicant, but I see Amy Hoffmer has her hand up.
Sure. So it does vary a little bit. We have some of the costs of participation in tax for other projects, other facilities captured in our interagency agreements with those agencies. Some agencies elect to participate independently rather than enter into an interagency agreement. And so it's historically, there's been some variation in how support for those positions have been provided for the funds that are provided in interagency agreements per EFSEC funding mechanisms. Those are passed along through invoices to the applicant.
Thank you.
Mr. Livingston?
Well, this, this concept for me was new. I, and maybe I just missed it in the past with other, particularly wind farm projects. Curious, do we have other examples where we put together the PTAG and, and then also I would like to ask Mr. Riddick? Mr. Ritter, if, you know, his perspective on this and, and then also if he's got any experience with a P tag.
Well, let me just answer the historic question before Mike takes a stab at it. But the, the, the idea that the P tag is new for this project. In previous projects, we have had the TAC operate private, in a role that, that placed it prior to construction to, to look at a lot of the citing and management plans that needed to be developed. Like I said, the existing documentation kind of indicates that the TAC is only supposed to exist post-construction for a project. So we developed this P tag as, as a, that kind of a sister committee that does a lot of the same work, but in an earlier phase of the project. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Amy Hoffkema, if you had something to add.
No, I, I was basically going to say the same thing you just said, so nothing to add.
Okay, and then Mike Ritter, if you want to come in?
Sure, thank you. Mike Livingston, could you, I would just want to be sure I answered your question or questions correctly. Can you rephrase that or not rephrase, but restate it for me, please?
Yeah, yeah, I sure can. So the, and it sounds like from what Sean had shared with us that this is a new concept of having a P tag, even though there's been the technical advisory committees put together during construction. But this one is a little different in that there's going to, it seems to me, and we'll get into more details with fruginus hawks. And that's why I'm just kind of priming the pump here for that discussion. But I think I wanted to know from your perspective generally, how you, how you view this new concept of interacting as the project is being designed, laid out, you know, because it, I don't believe we've had these in the past this way.
But thank you, and that's, that's what I thought I heard in your first kind of question about it. But I'm glad you reiterated it and you asked for my view on this. Yeah, this is the first project ever to have a P tag. And when I read the roles or responsibilities or what the P tag is going to do, review and provide technical advice on documents produced by the applicant. Well, that's what we have been doing for the last several years on this project, making recommendations, providing technical advice, as well as others have been who would also be part of the P tag. So I don't know how we would provide anything new or different from our conservation perspective on these, on this project. So that would be my view. It seems like we've, we've provided what we can already. Then I'm, I'm just, maybe you can hear from my, I'm trying to choose words and think, but I'm, I'm just confused by this, this P tag. That's all.
Well, for, I guess for one example, I think one of the mitigations I read about in the final EIS, and please, everybody correct me if I'm wrong, is that we're, the FEIS expressed concerns about migratory bat species and would like to see more studies done before construction. And the P tag would be the technical advisory group that would look at that study that hasn't been completed, but is additional work that likely would need to be done. And then comment on how that would have impact on the construction of the project. Sean, Amy, is this, or is this what you're looking for in, in this type of committee?
Yeah, I think that's a fair characterization. And the, the objective of the P tag is not to seek a, a different opinion than agency staff that might be participating or, or necessarily any, any new opinions. It's meant to serve as a technical oversight board as these plans are developed. So for, for instance, when we get to it eventually for pronghorn antelope, there's a, a requirement that the app can do seasonal surveys prior to construction and during operation. And the P tags role for that, that pre-construction survey would be to weigh in on methodology, on extent, on the technical aspects of those surveys and review the results and provide that guidance to FSEC as FSEC makes a determination about whether those surveys are, are sufficient to address potential concerns for that species. And that role expand, for, for the P tag is expanded to a number of mostly wildlife mitigation throughout the EIS.
So in other words, it's part of adaptive management when we find that perhaps what we predicted to happen isn't happening exactly the way we predicted it to happen. There's a mechanism for changing the mitigation.
Yes, you're, you're absolutely correct. That's another big role of the P tag and the TAC is developing adaptive management procedures in concert with FSEC to address any, any kind of deficiencies that, that come about throughout the lifespan of the project.
Thanks, Ms. Hafkema?
I just wanted to build a little bit on what Mike Ritter said. It is very much like the support they've been giving this project over the last several years. And is, you know, in part to ensure that those continued conversations and that continued input is happening. You know, recognizing that there are groups outside of FSEC that we work with, with expertise in these areas and ensuring that, that we have the appropriate parties for that ongoing review and input and adaptive management.
And, and one of the reasons from my perspective, I think it's a good idea, is that this is not just behind the scenes work. The work that will come up through the P tag will be public through reports and will come to the council as well as the staff in terms of information sharing. So I think it's a way to hold the applicant accountable, in my view. Ms. Moon?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to, to point out, in case somebody wants to post it on the screen, is table 4.6-10 summary of milestones. Is there really information, it's full of information on what the differences is or the responsibilities of the P tag and the TAC. And it has a, a construction timeline on there and operation. So all of the, the timing of what documents and what review each of those groups are doing is in that summary of milestones table 4.6-10, and there it is.
Are there any further questions at this point on the P tag or the TAC? Okay. Habitat five covers indirect habitat loss through the development of an indirect habitat loss management plan that would be developed in coordination with the P tag. And this plan would include the development of criteria to be used to compensate for loss of habitat function and value and a commitment to compensatory mitigation. Now, I'll give you time to read through this and develop questions. Are there any questions on Habitat five? Okay. Habitat six ensures that as the project layout is further refined closer to start. Sorry, what was that? Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, as the project layout is, is further refined closer to the start of construction, all changes would be coordinated with the P tag and FSEC. And Habitat seven requires that all roads built for the project would be removed and the land restored during decommissioning. If any roads are intended to be left in place following the lifespan of the project. For example, at landowner request, the applicant would be required to work with FSEC on the development of additional mitigation. Are there any questions on these measures? Habitat eight requires compensatory mitigation for all habitat loss and alteration as a result of the project, either through the development of conservation easements or fee-based mitigation to WDFW or a third party identified by WDFW. At this point, the, the, the project as proposed should be able to meet all compensatory mitigation needs, needs through option one, which is the conservation easement. And I'll let you read through this and develop questions. And I want to state that the ratios that have been developed for this compensatory mitigation are in table 4.5-3 within the EIS. And I can put those on the screen now if council would like, but first, Mr. Livingston?
Yeah, Sean, thanks. I'm curious, the option one conservation easement, why be prescriptive upfront as far as what the, you know, what's the desired outcome? Easement versus fee title acquisition?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't think I understand the question.
So, so you have a, you have option one conservation easement in parentheses there, right? That's, you know, that's just buying, for example, the development rights on a piece of property. So that's one form of doing conservation. Another form would be to buy the property outright and put it into full conservation status, not just development rights stripped from the property, but it's, say, it becomes public land, for example. So I'm not, and maybe I'm missing something in this, all the material here. But you said that the option one would be the likely preferred outcome? And I'm just wondering why we would limit ourselves to that?
If, so the applicant has developed a plan to meet all the compensatory mitigation needs through the purchase of conservation easements. That's not necessarily a preference that's been stated by FSEC. That's the applicant's preference. We have outlined here other potential options for meeting those same compensatory needs. All three are, are standard methods through which the, that compensation can be reached. So I don't, yeah, I, I guess that, that, that preference is coming from the applicant.
Okay, thank you for the clarity.
Yes. I'm sorry, I think I saw another hand, but I don't, I can't look at everybody.
I think it was Mr. Young, but I think he took it down.
Okay, and would, would the council like to see the, the habitat offset ratios?
Sure.
These are the ratios that were established within the, within the EIS. And again, I apologize, I, I have a WA Tech patch that's going to force itself to install and restart my computer several times here in the next 90 seconds. So I don't know if maybe, maybe Andrea can pull up the presentation and the council can continue, can continue to discuss while I, I have to go through several restarts.
I am also getting the same patch. So I believe Alex Shiley said, because we have been talking in the background. She said she should be good from the patch, so hopefully she can pull it up and share it while we're all restarting on our end.
Okay, good.
Unfortunately, I did also get the same information, so it looks like it's just poor timing here.
Well, and it could be a circular process, so some of us will go at different times. I think all of us have received that. So let's keep going and we may have to take an unscheduled few minute break, so let's just say that.
Okay, then we might want to schedule that for now, because I'm going to get kicked off here in 30 seconds.
Okay, let's take a short five minute break and be back, well, back at 2:43 PM. Like six minutes, okay. We are on break. So we are here on Habitat eight. And this is the mitigation measures, and we had some conversation about, I mean, I'm sorry, this is the compensation for habitat loss and alteration. Are there any other questions or comments from council members? I see a hand up. Go ahead, I'm not seeing who it is on my screen.
Yeah, sure, Drew, this is Lenny Young. My question is, for the second part of this, the fee-based mitigation, how are the funds that are raised through this part of the mitigation used? Where does the money go? What's it paid for?
So there, there's two routes that the fee-based mitigation can go through, either directly through WDFW or a third party identified by WDFW. I'm not familiar with, with how WDFW disperses those funds. Or I, I don't know if one of the WDFW SMEs might be more knowledgeable.
Well, this is Ritter, is that okay if I respond?
Certainly for me.
Thank you. In the past, the third party has held the money and we've worked with the third party kind of as an advisory role to help all of us figure out conservation on the land through granting opportunities, working with other partners. So we don't hold the money, they do.
Who's the third party? What kind of an organization is the third?
Down here in the Columbia Basin, it's been very challenging to find a third party that operates in that kind of business. So we've been using the Benton and Franklin Conservation District for ours down here, which has been really, really good. I would think that projects closer to Yakima and Ellensburg might use a, you know, a land, typical land trust and things like that.
Is the idea that the funds would be used to acquire habitat in the general vicinity of the project?
Yeah, very, yes, that is correct. It's, we, that's one of the primary overriding things is the, whatever we do with the money and we, we leave it wide open, whether it's whatever we do with the money and we leave it wide open, whether it's restoration, conservation, acquisition occurs in the county where the impact occurred.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, perhaps we're ready to move on to the next.
Okay. Now we're progressing into the species-specific mitigation. This first one targets the striped whip snake and sagebrush lizard and requires pre-construction surveys for those species with a management plan to follow. If either species is confirmed to be present during, within the lease boundary during those surveys. I'll give you a moment to read through this and present any questions that you have. Okay. Hearing no questions. We'll move on. Species 2 targets the American white pelican and mandates the creation of an observation database to persist throughout operation of the project with adaptive management potentially developed based on mortality records and the need for for management. And then Species 3 is specific to eagles and requires the applicant to implement WDFW recommend buffers for all bald and golden eagles and pursue requisite take permits from US Fish and Wildlife. And are there any questions on these two mitigation measures?
Ms. Brewster?
Yeah, I'm curious about the Pelican database. Can you talk a little bit about how those observations are recorded? Will there be surveys or they, are you counting on staff to record observations?
Yeah, so this would be staff recording observations during the the operation phase of the project. If there is a need for, or if there is determined to be a need for formal surveys, that is kind of baked into this mitigation measure as part of the adaptive management, if FSEC believes it is necessary. The expectation based on the data available and presented in chapter 3.6 of the EIS is that the species will be transversing the site but will not be nesting within lease boundary, so it's more of a concern of potential mortality of the species through strikes with turbans. And if we see that there are a concerning number of mortality events, then we would develop adaptive management.
Thanks.
And Mr. Young?
I've got a couple of questions for Mr. Watson on Spec 3 eagles. Jim, I'm mostly familiar with the concept of incidental take under the Endangered Species Act. And how how does that, does this, does the concept of incidental take also now operate under the Balden Golden Eagle Protection Act, or how, where do we, where do we stand? Both at the federal level and state level for for thinking about and implementing incidental take considerations for for bald and golden eagles?
Yeah, incidental take is really, the process has really changed over the years such that now the applicant in anticipation of eagle kills, for example, in this project would apply beforehand to take a certain number of eagles. And then the mitigation that would come through, you know, retrofits on power lines, that kind of thing would account for those eagles that are killed. And then that threshold that's anticipated of kill, if that is exceeded, then there would be additional mitigation. Is that kind of along the lines, Lenny, of what you've traditionally?
What 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 law or regulation is that continuing incidental take requirement flowing from? Where, what's the authority for that?
The Bald Eagle Protection, Bald Eagle Protection Act, yeah.
Okay, great. And then it sounds like the estimates of incidental take due to the project, have those been done? Do we, do we have those now in hand?
I don't know if I've seen those, but I would point out that there is no, there aren't any nesting eagles on this project, nor are there likely to be in the future. It's simply not the habitat for them. So it would be solely birds, you know, flying through the area and incidental strikes of non-breeders.
Okay, so that type of thing, like a incidental bird strike, that would trigger the need to address that as incidental take, but we're not, because the anticipation isn't there. It's not as if the project has estimated a level of incidental take that would occur over the life of the project or anything like that?
Yeah, I might be speaking out of turn because I'm not sure if the the project has actually calculated that. You would have to actually, they would actually have to address that, so. But again, based on my perspective, it would be very, very low to be, you know, expected, so.
Great, thank you very much. Sure.
Yeah, I would just say to this point, I don't believe that a calculation of estimated take has occurred yet, but as was mentioned, there's not anticipated to be much. I think then there's no bald eagle nests anywhere near the the site, and I think the closest golden eagle nest is at least four miles away. Are there any other questions on these two? Yes, Jason?
I I might have misheard you, or maybe you misspoke, but the the, I'm not sure if there is a a golden eagle nest within four miles of the property. And there would be bald eagle nests along the river within probably, I'm guessing that's four or five miles, so maybe the bald eagles are along the river, not too far from the property.
Yeah, sorry, I think I completed the two. I believe that's accurate. Okay. Hearing no further questions. Species 4 is specific to the burrowing owl and requires pre-construction surveys for the species with a half-mile buffer applied to any identified nest with a management plan being developed in coordination with the P tag if any nests are identified. I'll give, give the council time to read through this. Are there any questions on Species 4? Okay. Yes.
Yeah, Sean. So, so, okay, so the WDFW recommended seasonal buffers would be applied around the nests, and that's, that seasonal buffer would be for construction. Right? And then if there's owl nests, burrows identified within, I don't know, X distance of turbans, there'd be an effort to realign the turbans to avoid those. What would be the, let's see here. It doesn't, doesn't prescribe what the distance would be if you're trying to avoid an active burrowing owl nest. And that would just be left up to the P tag to work through? Is that, is that what you are planning?
Yes, the the P tag would would weigh in on that and as WDFW would would have membership on that that group, FSEC would take their technical guy and send it into strong consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Species 5 is our most, I think, complex and lengthy mitigation measure, so it actually takes up the next three slides. So I can move back and forth as as the council is discussing, but it can essentially be described as a requirement that all project components be sighted at least two miles from any identified frugus hawk nest. This two-mile buffer would be applied to all 55 nests within the lease boundary, as well as an additional eight that are within two miles of the lease boundary for a total of 63. This mitigation does outline a process through which the applicant may cite components within two miles of a nest under specific circumstances, which would include, first, a determination through a current survey that the nest is not currently occupied by the frugus hawk. And second, a determination that the habitat on which the project infrastructure would be cited does not represent viable frugus hawk foraging habitat. Presumably as a result of landscape level conversion into cropland or residential development or similar, where the frugus hawk would be unable to forage. And I'm just gonna move to the next slide, so you can continue to read along, but again, we can move back and forth.
Can we just pause there for a second? Because I think this is important for all of the council members and in fact, the public who are participating to to understand when you speak about 55 to six, about six years old nests. They are not necessarily filled or expected to be filled with frugus hawks right now. Can you describe what this includes in terms of the frugus hawk?
Yes, so those 63 nests are nests that have been historically recorded as constructed within that area that could serve as frugus hawk nest. It's it's not confirmed necessarily whether a frugus hawk has actually built or ever occupied those nests. During the, I believe, five years of nest surveys that the applicant has performed in preparation for this project, two nests, I believe, have been confirmed to be occupied by frugus hawks, one for a single year and a second nest for two years. Currently, none of this, or as as of the most recent survey, which was performed earlier this year, none of the 63 nests were occupied by the frugus hawk.
And, oh, okay, and James has raised his hand, so Watson, right? I'm on my cellphone, so I can't see everything.
Oh, that's correct, thank you. I just wanted to correct that as to my information, if if the 55 nests plus are ones that we provided, those in fact have been confirmed confirmed at one time to have been used by frugus hawks. We've done in the past an extensive review of nests to eliminate those that are not known to be, have been used. And of course, those nests individually don't represent a nesting pair, rather, there are 18 nesting pairs associated with those nests. Because particular pair of birds can use more than one nest over time. So again, 18 territories, 55 plus nests. Anyway, wanted that clear, that clarification.
I I appreciate the clarification. The the vast majority of those nests did come from WDFW data sets. A few of them were identified by the applicant during their their five years of survey, but the the vast majority are from WDFW, so those would be nests that have been confirmed to have been occupied by the frugus hawk at one point in time.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I see Mr. Livingston and one other, so go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. So this question's for Mr. Watson. So the approach here that is proposed of putting a buffer of two miles around individual nest sites, how does that capture and and provide protection compared to what you stated was territories of 18 pairs in the area? Is this nest buffer approach the the appropriate way to protect those 18 territories?
Good question. If you'll bear with me just a minute. The the, our recommendation from the beginning has been to protect a two-mile core buffer area. The core area of a home range of frugus hawks, and I I'll use this illustration so everybody can understand kind of a layperson description, would be like your house. The frugus hawks, you know, on a regular basis, daily in and out, would rest in a particular place at the nest. They may, you know, go to a, you know, different room in the house and all those kinds of things like we would. But that would be the regular use area. And in fact, they would put a lock on the door. Now this, I'll illustrate why that's important as well. And that's, that's to prevent, you know, disturbance within that core area. Now, the point is, we've recommended only, on average, extends out to about six miles from the nests. And so if you can envision, if you left your home on a daily basis to go to the grocery store or go to work or, you know, take a run, that might not be as regular as the area you use in the core area, but it would nonetheless be vital to, you know, your existence. Yet it's a little less certain as to where those areas are out in the landscape. And they're also more distant from your home, of course. The point would be, that's why we've chosen to really focus on a two-mile core habitat as being critical to protecting the integrity of these 18 territories. Because there's uncertainty and would be prohibitive to suggest a six-mile buffer across the landscape for protecting these 18 territories. But nonetheless, that's essential habitat, so I just point that out because these birds, as we protect them, are going to be covering the entire landscape, you know, several miles out from where these nests are. So that two-mile area becomes all the more important to protect in terms of integrity. And so with that illustration, Mike, I don't know if that helps or if you've got a specific question about that, but that kind of lays the groundwork as to our process and how we came up with the buffers that we recommended.
Yeah, if I may follow up. So what is being described here as the approach? How how close is that to what you've been recommending to FSEC staff?
Yeah, the big difference is they are recommending turbans be placed within that two-mile core area, essentially within your house. You know, the area that I would look at as the most critical to be protected because that's going to be the area that they use on a daily basis, flying in and out of turbans on a daily basis within that core area. And so this proposal actually does include the two different options. It does include a number of turbans within the core zone. In fact, I computed for 12 territories, there are an average of, and those 12 territories are ones in which there were turbans proposed in the core area. And for those 12 territories, there are an average of 14.8 turbans per territory proposed for option one. So again, what's the probability of one of these birds hitting a turbine within that two-mile zone? When you have 14 turbans on average, 14.8 turbans within the core area? Well, there's some probability there, but all I can say is when you, when you increase the disturbance, the number of turbans within that core area, you're increasing the probability of a turbine strike or impacting the birds through loss of foraging habitat or, you know, disturbance at the nest. Those are critical aspects. And I I mentioned disturbance again and mortality because in the EIS and in fact, in the earlier thing that was presented, maybe it's on this page, actually, it doesn't mention that within that two-mile zone, one of the critical aspects of of impact is potential turbine strike or disturbance to the birds. It mentions here, loss of habitat and and loss of nest structure, I believe. So anyway.
I'd like to to follow up. I'm trying to understand, are the two miles of the identified nests, and I understand they're used by, they have been used historically by 18 pairs and they have been used historically by 18 pairs and they could use multiple. So is that different than two miles from the core area? Is that what you're saying?
Right. So within, if you envision, these nests for these pairs are not that far apart. So they're not like miles apart. So within this home range, you actually have a core area that you may have a couple nests that would shift this two mile core area to make it slightly larger. But relatively speaking, we're talking again, essentially within a two mile core area zone. It's not, you know, so these birds might nest within a couple hundred meters of, have an alternative nest. So it's not significantly different.
So the two miles of a forageous hawk nest pretty much correlate correlates with what you're talking about, two miles of core area?
That's correct.
Okay, but your concern is the specifics that are laid out for if a turbine could be located, like the exception rule that's laid out in this mitigation. Is that what you're concerned about?
That was one of the striking things that didn't include anything about disturbance or mortality, fatality strikes. These birds are obviously susceptible to turbine strikes. And yet what's mentioned here is it would be considered if habitat is no longer viable in the, in that area, or I think there was a mention of nest site structure. And actually, that's unclear as well. It says the nest site is no longer available. And I'm presuming that means the supporting nest structure rather than the nest material itself. These birds do return to unoccupied territories up to 20 years after they've been used. So as long as there's nest structure, suitable foraging habitat, and then a lack of development on those areas, that's what we're looking for to reoccupy and recover the species overall.
So you would, you would prefer no turbines within that two mile buffer?
That's, that's correct. That's what we've, that's what we've recommended.
Okay. Yeah. And, yeah. And yes, I think that, and I understand what the FEIS says is, I want to ask our team, I, if there's anything else you want to add to this discussion, and I do see you, Mr. Young, so we will get to that too. But I just wanted to clarify, clarify that. And I think that, that certainly some different information, I mean, it's included in this recommendation. It's just that there was an exception process within the recommendation. So I hear you, what you're saying there. Sean, or are there, is there anyone else who wants to comment on this from the staff?
Sure, just a few notes. One, this, this mitigation measure does not recommend a construction of any project components within that two mile buffer. That, that exception clause is kind of, is meant to be an exceptional circumstance. And the process through which that exception would take place does go through the P tag with final FSEC approval for, for each individual turbine and involves additional steps which are covered in the rest of this mitigation, which are, which is on the next slide and a half. If we want to go to those, but it does involve additional development of mitigation and management for that species, including turbine curtailment if during experience, periods of high activity for the species. And the other thing was, I just wanted to say that the, the reading of no nesting structures, it, what was accurate is meant to indicate that the actual structure upon which a nest was constructed is no longer available, not, not necessarily just the nesting material.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I saw a couple of hands pop up, but they were gone now.
Okay. Ms. Hoffgemeyer, do you want to add something at this point?
I just wanted to direct the council, if you're looking for information or discussion on mortality and turbine strikes. We do have that information in the, the text and in chapter four in the impacts discussion. I think maybe those, that verbiage isn't in this mitigation measure here, but we do have that discussion in the EIS.
Okay. So this measure, as I hear it, is to say there should be no turbines within this two mile unless there's an exception approved. And I understand what we heard from Mr. Watson is he prefers it with no turbines in there. So I, Mr. Young?
Yeah, kind of, kind of along the same line. In the first line of, of the spec five paragraph starter says that would avoid citing project components within core habitat in territories defined as the habitat within a two mile radius. Does that mean that project components could be sighted within a two mile radius if they are not constructed in a vegetation type that is considered habitat? Or is all the land area within the two mile radius considered to be habitat and project components would be completely excluded?
Mr. Green?
Yeah, so that, that kind of blends into the, the exception methodology where project components would be allowed to be cited within two miles if the applicant essentially makes a case that the site upon which the component is, is intended to be constructed no longer represents viable forageous hawk habitat, usually through landscape level conversion. In this area would primarily be to cropland, which is not suitable for the species. And they would perform surveys to justify essentially their argument, present that to the P tag, and the P tag would consider the merits of that determination and provide FSEC with a recommendation as to whether or not that, that particular area does represent habitat. If it does represent viable habitat, then the project component would not be allowed to be cited there under any circumstances with this mitigation. If that recommendation includes an acknowledgement that the site no longer contains suitable habitat, then they would, the process will begin for developing additional mitigation and management for the species to allow for the construction within the two mile buffer.
I think the, the concept is clear, the way you explained it. Thank you. But the, the language could probably stand to be cleaned up a little bit. Because what, what's sort of hard to express the way this is written, I think, is the idea that whether the same vegetation type would be considered habitat or not depends upon an assessment of the viability of the entire territory. And, and that the way it's written is a little wonky right now, but don't have to wordsmith it today, of course. But that'll be something maybe to look at this paragraph and make sure that it's as clear as it possibly can be.
Well, certainly if we, if the council decides that there's a recommendation in some form, we can look at the conditions associated with that and, and address any needs there. Thanks. Other questions about this slide noting that there are some other additional recommended mitigations on forageous hawk? Mr. Livingston?
Yeah, I'm, so this P tag and the onus being put on the applicant to demonstrate that the habitat's no longer viable is one thing that has, you know, since I read it when the FEIS came out, has concerned me a bit because it, it puts, it, it will put WDFW's biologist in a position of having to then argue against what the applicant's going to put forward because I can envision in many cases here, the applicant's going to try to describe why the habitat's not viable in a particular turbine zone or a forageous hawk buffer. So I think we really need to think about this one because I'd rather not set ourselves up for a bunch of back and forth during the P tag environment and remove as much of that uncertainty as possible as we're going forward with this project because it's certainly from, from my perspective, I can see where it puts the biologist in a really adversarial role here after, if we were to approve this project and make a recommendation to the governor for it. So it's just, it's, it's a concern for my, of mine since the beginning, since I read this notion of a P tag. And I think I heard that from Mr. Ritter as well as his, his concerns related to this too.
Okay, good. Thank you. Mr. Young?
Yeah, I would take that even further and suggest that the DFW would play the role that is described here for P tag for, for this particular species. And these particular decisions that are, are laid out, that this process is, don't, don't task this to the P tag, have DFW do this with FSEC instead of the P tag.
Okay. I think those are all good things for us to, to consider as, as well as perhaps the other impacts of, of some of these turbines when we have our discussion next month. But thank you for bringing it up now. And I didn't mean to stall off any other comments by saying that. So any more comments? On this particular, I think this is, is one we're very concerned about in the council. We'll have an opportunity to, to shape that concern further if we move towards a recommendation. Okay, next slide?
Sure. And I just want to, to make it abundantly clear that in this mitigation, as in all mitigation, FSEC is the final decision-making authority. So it's not necessarily, or it, it would not be the case that the P tag is making a decision about whether to cite components within the two mile buffer. They would be providing guidance and FSEC would make final decision. So this is most of the rest of species five. And it essentially outlines the process through which if the applicant has performed surveys to make a case that the identified nest is not currently occupied or the, the nesting structure is no longer present and the impacted habitat is not viable for the species, that they would submit the results for the P, to the P tag for consideration. And then the P tag would work with the applicant to develop a monitoring mitigation and management plan for the species, which would include compensatory mitigation that would result in a net gain for, for the forageous hawk in terms of habitat. And couldn't involve other methods, methods such as turbine curtailment during periods of high activity. And the P tag would provide a final recommendation to FSEC upon which the FSEC would have approval, decision-making powers on the sighting of any components within that two mile buffer of an identified nest.
Are there comments, questions about this mitigation measure?
I think I saw Mr. Watson's hand go up.
Thank you. Mr. Watson?
Sure, just one quick additional comment. One thing some of our current research is showing is that with wind power projects and some other projects, the number of other nesting species, and Lenny will understand this, particularly ravens and great horned owls increases pretty significantly on wind power projects. And both of these species are not only competitors with forageous hawks, but also they predate eggs and young. So that's another concern we have with the changes in the immediate landscape around these forageous hawk nests. Thank you.
Mr. Young?
Yeah, two, two questions for Mr. Watson. First, following up on, on what you just spoke, Jim. Do you see a need here for possible lethal control of ravens and/or great horned owls?
Great question. And Lenny, from the federal, just to avoid the question, the, from the federal perspective, that'd be very difficult to do, even with some of the shorebird species that experience direct mortality from ravens, for example. Unless you can actually show numbers and have physical evidence, the, the fish and walleye service is reluctant to issue lethal control permits for ravens. So in this case, it would probably be a stretch to say that that would be possible. But it's something to consider for sure.
And then the second question is, I, I saw the reference here to ground squirrel colonies. It got me thinking about rodenticides. And maybe that was already covered earlier in our conversation today in the general wildlife stuff. But do we need anything here that is specific to preventing forageous hawks from ingesting prey items that have been contaminated with pesticides, rodenticides? Did they scab, did they scavenge at all? Is that part of their food habits here in this part of their range?
They certainly do, and probably more so from varmit hunting as far as ingestion of lead. But I think Sean didn't, wasn't there a section here on, somewhere in the document on poison control or am I, am I?
There, there was something about rodenticides in our, in the very, very early part of our, our meeting today up in the, the general wildlife. Maybe that covers it.
It was, I believe, wildlife four.
Yeah, rodenticide would not be allowed within the project lease boundary.
Okay. What about other types of larger carcasses with, with forageous hawks in this area, ever scavenge? Livestock carcasses, coyote carcasses, any, any larger carcasses that might be involved with poisoning somehow?
Very rarely. And of course, this species is migratory, Lenny, so they're only here during breeding and they're going to be grabbing the small, small prey to take to the nest. So probably occasional, but probably not a significant concern.
Right. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Or perhaps we can move on to the next slide?
Absolutely. So this just finishes off the forageous hawk mitigation. And then moves on to species six, which is focused on the great blue heron, sandhill crane and tundra swan, and would require the creation of an observation database, the application of recommended buffers and adaptive management when necessary. Are there any final questions on species five or any questions on species six? Okay.
We are, have the time has, we're at 3:30 PM. I know we had a bit of a break, but we will continue to move on through our agenda today. So our meeting will be lasting longer. So just wanted to let folks know that this is critical information for the council to have and to be able to ask questions. So we are going to continue.
Okay. And moving on. Species seven addresses the loggerhead strike, sage rush sparrow, sage thrasher and box's swift, and would minimize impacts to suitable habitat and avoid the use of insecticides or herbicides within the lease boundary. I'll give you a moment to read to that. Yes, Jason?
Yeah, I, I'm not familiar with the protocol. If I can interject kind of my own thought on this. But I'll go ahead. So some of the, a lot of these species that we were just up on the screen before, and these ones, you know, they're, they're talking about habitat on site. And most of these are migrants, the species on this list, particularly the first three are going to be nocturnal migrants. And they're going to have impacts. The project can have potential impacts, lethal impacts to populations in Washington beyond the site boundary. So particularly with the sighting of this and for sandhill cranes as well. Roosting areas may not be adjacent immediately to the Roosting areas may not be adjacent immediately to the pro, uh, project boundary. But, you know, we do know in West Richland, there's a major crane congregation area. We do know that these species are going to be flying north, south. The ones on this page primarily nocturnal migrants at elevations. That, you know, I don't, I don't believe they did any assessment of nocturnal migration through this area. And we, we are on a major corridor in Eastern Washington with the Columbia River there. So I did just want to raise that, uh, kind of concern that I haven't seen addressed in the document.
Ms. Brewster?
Yeah, um, I'm just wondering then, is there a case to be made for, um, curtailment during migratory periods that could be studied?
Or perhaps the, it would could be that, um, to monitor and if we find that there is, um, I mean, that would be the reason for the TAC, perhaps to look at, at any kind of impact by turbine strikes throughout the project.
Yes, and, and that references back to the Wildlife One mitigation, which is the post-construction bird mortality surveys that are performed for, uh, three of the first five years of the project's operation and adaptive management is developed based on the results of those surveys, which can include, uh, turban curtailment during periods of high activity.
Thank you.
Are there further questions on Species Seven? Okay. Uh, Species Eight is for the prairie falcon and implements a mandate for pre-construction surveys and buffers of any identified nests. And Species Nine targets the ring-necked pheasant and requires uh, consideration of native grass seed mix for mixes for revegetation as well as adaptive management if, if necessary. Mr. Livingston?
Livingston, yeah.
Yeah, this one for prairie falcon, I'd like to know from either, uh, Jason or Jim, their thoughts about wintering, um, birds, because I do know that Horse Heaven Hills area can be a place for wintering raptors, prairie falcons is one of them. But what's, what's the level of concern there for wintering birds?
Jason, I think you've done some work up there in the winter with raptors. Is that correct?
Primarily incidental, but, um, yeah, there, I mean, the Horse Heaven Hills, uh, I've seen jeer falcons and snowy owl, plus the more expected, you know, we do seem to see an influx of prairie falcons. Typically, you know, just from, there's not a standardized survey or anything that's been conducted, uh, by myself. But, um, you know, there's open agricultural fields in the project boundary are host to a lot of, uh, wintering birds of prey, um, which can include golden eagles at times. Certainly bald eagle. And the other aforementioned species. So, uh, yeah, I would, I would consider this pretty, uh, this area is kind of a hotspot for, uh, wintering raptor use. There may be some, uh, surveys, I, I have to check, there is a, uh, Oregon, uh, Audubon somewhat related group that has established some winter raptor survey counts. I don't know if any fall through the project boundary or the adjacent Horse Heaven Hills area.
So, um, perhaps, um, Sean, we, we would want to add, um, a winter, uh, pre-construction survey as well.
We, we can certainly incorporate that into mitigation and have it presented, uh, for the council at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Any further questions on these two? Species Ten addresses the black-tailed jackrabbit and white-tailed jackrabbit and requires pre-construction surveys and suitable habitat and the development of a management plan with adaptive maintenance or adaptive management if the species are identified onsite. And Species Eleven addresses Townsend's big-eared bat and includes a requirement to retain potential roosting sites, restrict access to any potentially contaminated waters onsite and report all mortalities to FSEC in preparation for adaptive management if necessary. Are there any questions on these two? Okay. Uh, Species Twelve is for Townsend's ground squirrel and mandates pre-construction surveys and would exclude project components from being cited in areas rated medium or greater for habitat concentration for the species. Uh, and if components, uh, need to be cited in areas rated as medium or greater, a management and mitigation plan would be developed and submitted to FSEC for approval along with the potential site for that component. Are there any questions here? Okay. Uh, and our last wildlife mitigation measure, Species Thirteen targets the pronghorn antelope and requires that fencing be limited to the greatest extent feasible and the implementation of a seasonal pronghorn study before construction and during operation with adaptive management developed a, as necessary throughout the life of the project. And that, the, also the creation of a observation database that is made available to WDFW, FSEC and the Yakima Nation.
We would need to perhaps have that, a conversation that may be a confidential, then a confidential database amongst those three entities, correct?
I, we would need to look into that, but I, I could certainly understand why it would potentially be so.
Okay. Marlis?
Yes, thank you. My question is, um, would Yakima Nation have their own subject matter expert on one of those TAC or P tags?
Of course. I'm sorry, Marlis. I thought you were one of our contractors. So, um, because we're trying to keep just the questions to the council members, but absolutely the Yakima Nation would be invited.
Part of me. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any questions on Species Thirteen? Then we can move on to, uh, Historic and Cultural Resources. So there, there are only two mitigation measures here, but both are, are fairly lengthy and involve additional work to be completed, uh, throughout the life of the project. Cultural Resources, one reflects the concerns for project impacts to traditional cultural properties. Traditional cultural properties, uh, include features of tribal, cultural or religious significance and are considered extremely sensitive with avoidance being the only fully effective mitigation measure identified. Uh, as a result, the EIS has identified likely significant impacts to this resource, but this mitigation is designed to ensure that the applicant, affected tribes and FSEC, uh, establish and continue an ongoing dialogue throughout the life of the project on mitigation measures that may be effective at reducing said impacts. Several examples of those potential mitigation strategies are, are listed in this mitigation measure. You can take a minute to read through that and develop questions. Mr. Livingston?
Yeah, uh, Sean, so the statement about, uh, enable continued access for tribes through an access agreement for first feeds procurement. Can, can you explain to me, uh, and, and I know there's, there's sensitive information here, so, but I'm just trying to, generally speaking, in the project area. Particular areas, uh, you know, it's going to be outside of wheat fields and CRP, but I assume there's either public land or private land where, uh, the Umatilla zordiakamas have access for currently accessing foods, roots and, and other plants. Um, and do we have any project or components, particularly like solar, that are proposed for those areas? I couldn't quite, I couldn't figure out that in EIS and all the information that we currently have. So I'm just generally speaking, trying to understand what the significant impact, um, or what the level of impact is.
Sure. And, um, so, uh, per the treaty rights reserved by the tribes, they have the right to access any publicly owned lands to, uh, collect first foods. Uh, access to private lands has to be made with, uh, by agreement with that, that privately owned owner. To my knowledge, none of the private lands targeted for this project have an existing access agreement with, with any tribe. So in terms of continuing, uh, access agreements, though, that would be on the publicly, public parcels within the project area. I believe one of the solar arrays, it encroaches on a public and an area of public land, that's the, uh, the solar array in the southwestern portion of the site. So that would be the only one that would potentially impact, uh, current legal access to first foods. It, I believe that my memory is correct on that part, but if anybody knows better than you can speak up.
Well, and perhaps that, given, given we're going to get site-specific, this is better for a different conversation. I just, I'm trying, you know, I'm trying to understand how, if we can, if, if we're mitigating enough to avoid these impacts to these access sites, um, that are currently existing.
Yeah, so uh, like I said, the, the only, as far as more, the only current legal access site that the tribes have access to would be the public, publicly owned lands. And the only publicly, public owned land that the solar arrays interact with is, uh, the parcel in the southwestern part of the site. I don't, I don't have knowledge as to whether any of the, the project area currently contains first foods or uh, have, have been traditionally used by, by the tribes for access to those foods. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions on this mitigation measure? Okay. Uh, the second cultural resources mitigation measure is focused on archaeological and architectural resources and is expanded further upon in table four point nine dash nine in the EIS, which I can bring up if, if the council desires. But this, this table identifies the specific, oh, sorry, Mr. Levy, you have a question?
Yeah, sorry. I guess just to go back to the last slide for a moment. Just seems like one of the things we heard is the tribes would strongly prefer that these sites remain confidential. So does this suggest that we would demarcate a culturally significant site in the solar array area? I mean, I guess just, it just brings up if we're saying there are no-go area and it's on public land, someone could figure out what those sites are potentially.
Yes, and the demarcation of any no-go areas would be a decision that's reached in, uh, discussions with the tribes. So that, I, I understand the, the concern of inadvertently revealing any, any uh, traditional cultural property locations, and that, that would be part of this ongoing discussion throughout the life of the project on, on what are mitigation measures that could effectively maintain the security of, of those resources, both from public knowledge and from project actions.
Okay, thank you, Sean.
Of course. And moving back into CR2, uh, table four point nine dash nine in the EIS identifies, uh, specific mitigation that's required for each of the fifty-two archaeological and architectural resources within the lease boundary, uh, with a recommendation for avoidance of all of those resources and a requirement to pursue the relevant, uh, DAP permit when necessary, if avoidance is not possible. And, uh, coordination with tribes, with, with affected tribes and DAP where, for, for resources where a permit is not necessarily required. Um, and I don't know if it might be more effective if I bring up that table. It's uh, so this is the table and it's divided by the resource type. So whether the resource is archaeological or architectural in nature and the time period for which the, uh, resource is from, whether it's pre-contact or historic, and as well as whether that resource is an isolate or a, a full site. And this table identifies the sensitivity of each of those types of resources with, again, a recommendation that all are, uh, avoided if possible. And if not possible, then this final column indicates what mitigation is required. If that, that resource is to be impacted. And for most of them, it is pursuing a, a permit through the DAP process, which is, which is part of that process is coordinated with the tribes as well. Um, and for resources that don't require a permit, it is just, um, a coordination with the tribes and DAP regardless. Are there any questions on Culture Resources Two or Table Four Point Nine Dash Nine? Okay. Uh, next, we will be moving into, uh, visual aesthetics, light and glare and shadow flicker uh, as a resource. And before we do that, uh, we wanted to go through uh, a few of the visual simulations that have been, been provided for the project. I believe there are twenty-three in total in the final ASC, but we selected a few of them here just to give an idea of what the project would look like from various vantage points.
I think, um, if, if we could, I think that, um, I'm going to ask for a five-minute health break.
Yes.
For council members and perhaps for others who have been participating, yes, participating in the meeting just to get a glass of water, whatever else, and let's come back to the visual in five minutes. And let's come back to the visual in five minutes. We are on break. Okay, Kathleen Drew calling us back to order here. I can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And you're back. That's good.
Yes.
And we're about ready to start on the conversation about visual impacts. And again, what we're doing is we're looking at the mitigation measures for the council to better understand what is in the proposed mitigation measures for the final EIS. So with that, go ahead and continue the presentation.
Thank you. So yes, like I was saying, we wanted to show the council a selection of the visual simulations that were performed just to give a a general idea of what the project looks like from multiple vantage points. This first is a view from South Claude Velter Road. And I should just say, the the visual simulations are all going to look, follow the same format where in the bottom right you see an arrow showing the location and direction of the viewpoint being expressed. The top image is the existing conditions from that vantage point. The second image is with option one, so the higher number of turbines, but at a shorter height. And option two would be being the fewer number of turbines at a higher height. So the primary viewer type from this location would be residential. And the distance to the project is approximately three miles. The next simulation is from Chandler Butte, which is the northwestern extreme of the project. The primary viewer type would be recreational and the distance to the project is approximately two miles. And I wanted to note that these blue dots that I added to these simulations are indicative of turbines that have subsequently been eliminated from consideration as a result of applicant commitments.
And can I ask too, are these? Who conducted, who developed these visual simulations?
The applicants consultant.
Okay. And I noted within the description as well that there were comments about the hazing of the pictures. And so these are ones that do not have the hazing. Is that correct?
That's correct. Subsequent to the publication of the draft EIS, the visual simulations were reperformed by the applicants consultant to remove hazing.
Okay.
Of the images. The next visual simulation is from the from Highland, also known as the Finney Finley area. And I did want to note that in the, can you guys see my mouse cursor? No, okay.
Oh, yes, yes, I can.
Okay, okay. In the top image in the the right hand side of the the image, that is the existing Nine Canyon Wind Project. So those turbines already exists within this view shed and are not part of this project. The primary viewer site from this location would be residential and the distance to the project is approximately two miles. And this is north of essentially the eastern extreme of the project area. The next visual simulation is from South Travis Road. The primary viewer types would be residential and travel orders. And the distance to the project is approximately one mile. And this is essentially south of the western part of the project. Looking north. This is a simulation that is new to the final ASC. It's a view from the Avonia Winery. The primary viewer types would be commercial and travel route. The distance to the project is approximately five miles. And again, the blue dots are turbines that have subsequently been removed from consideration by applicant commitments. But this kind of the center of the image is representative of Weber Canyon, which was an area that was of particular concern to a number of resources and has been targeted for for several services to be removed by applicant commitments. This is a view from Benton City. The primary viewer types would be residential, commercial and travelers. And the distance to the project is approximately 2.5 miles. This image and the subsequent images as part of this presentation were all added. The simulation, these simulations were added as a result of public comments from the draft EIS. So this is a particular view shed that public commenters were concerned about. This is a view from Interstate 82, traveling through Beaufort Canyon. Primary viewer type would be traveler and the distance to the project is zero miles. This is directly in the center of the project. And again, the the one blue dot is a turbine that has been removed from consideration. And this is added as a result of public comments. This is a view from Twin Sisters Rock, east of the Lula Gap. Primary viewer type would be recreational and distance to the project is approximately five miles. And it was added as a result of public comments, the DEIS. And the final simulation is similar in location, but instead of on top of Twin Sisters Rock, this is along US Route 730 in approximately the same location, east of the Lula Gap, again, about five miles from the project. For this one, however, no project components will be visible from this location. They've been shown here in light blue to indicate their actual position geographically, but they are blocked from view by the existing topography. And if we want to, we can refer back to those as we go through visual mitigation. But we can start going through these now. The first visual one requires that all turbines be located at least half a mile from nonparticipating residences. So those are residences that do not have a lease contract with the applicant. Visual two prohibits the installation of any advertising or secondary nonproject components onto turbines. Visual three requires that turbines in the cells be cleaned in cases where they accumulate dirt or have visual staining. And visual four ensures that where where feasible vegetation beneath solar arrays is not completely cleared during construction so as to avoid exposing bare earth. And this area also requires that in cases where this this is not able to be done, meaning that bare earth is exposed, revegetation occurs following the completion of construction. Does the council have questions for these measures for the visual simulations? And Chair Drew, you mentioned that there was a figure that you wanted to discuss. Would you prefer we do that now or at the end of visual? I think you're muted.
Thank you. I think it'd be fine to do it now. It was one that as I reviewed the final EIS, I had questions about, and you have that one for me.
Yes, it is right here, and it is a view shed analysis of the first turbine layout option. These, I can zoom in a bit. These yellow dots are the KOPs that were included in. They they aren't inclusive of all the KOPs because a few were added subsequent to this, but most of the KOPs are the yellow dots. The green squares are existing residences. And the various colors of shading, as you can see in the legend, are the number of turbines that would be visible from those locations.
And I noted in the description that it actually said, because I was trying to figure out, you know, the purple areas, that's where larger numbers of turbines could be visible. But that's because of, it's not because people have actually been there looking in that direction, but because of the height of the topography. Is that correct?
Yes.
So essentially, you're looking across the valley and towards where this project will be located.
Yes, the number of turbines that's visible is a comment is determined by a combination of distance from the project and the existing topography. So areas further away and higher up, you will be able to see more turbines. But there's kind of a balancing act there in that they will be much smaller, obviously, because you're further away. So that doesn't mean that the impacts to further distances are necessarily less significant than viewer viewers at closer distances. It's just a kind of a combination of multiple factors that that need to be assessed.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions on this figure?
Mr. Levitt.
Yeah, hi, Sean. You know, I guess I have to say before I ask, I really appreciate all the work that FSEC team has put into all of the EIS analysis. I know it's tremendous and it took a lot of time and it's it's a really big document. So I recognize it was really big investment. And perhaps my question isn't entirely fair because it's after the process versus during the process. But when doing the view analysis, to me, there's maybe perhaps some crossover in the future that could happen with making sure different people and groups are represented. So, you know, if you look at this map, the I believe 10 mile buffer would include roughly, you know, between 200 or maybe around 200, 250,000 people, let's just say. And of those, if you look at the socioeconomic analysis, a certain percentage are low income and a significant percentage are people of color. So I guess you know, I'm not, I'm not saying we can go back and revisit the process, but in the future, I think it might make sense to make sure some of our key observational viewpoints are ones where we get feedback from from a diverse set of interested parties. So yeah, I don't know if you'd care to comment on this, but it when I think about the view analysis as well as the socioeconomic analysis, to me, there's some crossover, maybe, maybe some for potential for more thinking in the future in projects like this.
Yeah, and there's, there's certainly always more that can be done, but in the selection of the KOPs, that was a consideration taken into account. And in our analysis of the adherence of the project to the the concept of environmental justice in chapter 4.16, there is a discussion of whether or not the project would have disproportionate visual impacts on on underprivileged communities. So I I agree that that's, that's always something that can be improved upon, but I I think there was an effort made with this analysis to take that into account.
Yeah, I hear you. I think in that section, or maybe it's a different one. There was a, there was an attempt to look at numbers by census tract too. And I thought that was interesting because a lot of those census tracts were really either in the site or very close to the site. But in this particular case, the impact goes, it goes beyond those census tracts.
That's, that's a good point. Okay. Any further questions on these four measures? Okay. Visual five requires the installation of color treated opaque fencing to screen views of solar arrays where the arrays are sighted within one half mile of roadways or residences. Visual six requires that the battery stations be constructed of materials and painted colors that would result in the least, the least contrast to the existing set setting feasible. Visual seven would require that the span length of transmission lines be maximized to the extent feasible to minimize the number of towers that would need to be constructed. And visual eight ensures that the type of transmission tower selected for the project match the type of transmission towers that are currently in place within the project area to reduce visual contrast. Are there any questions on these four? Okay. And the the final mitigation measures for this resource, the first two are in reference to shadow flicker, which is the the rapid movement of shadows from turbine blades across a single location. And the first measure ensures that efforts are taken to minimize the effects of shadow flicker at nonparticipating residences, including the construction of screening where it's practical and stopping turbine operation during periods of high or extended shadow flicker. And how those periods would be determined is mostly as as a result of the the second mitigation measure here, which complete creates a complaint complaint resolution hotline for residents where they can report undesirable shadow flicker. And the applicant is required to take resolution measures as a result of those complaints with both the complaint and the the proposed resolution being reported to FSEC on a monthly basis during regularly scheduled council meetings. And the final measure on this list is for light. And that requires the project to use LEED certified building exteriors and security lighting to minimize illumination at night. Are there questions on these measures?
Ms. Gerster?
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Sean. I was just wondering, are these fairly standard mitigation practices with other projects or do these go above and beyond what's standard?
I think this shot, the the light one is is fairly standard. The shadow flicker measures, I believe, exceed what we have done in previous projects. I don't know if Amy Hoffmeyer or Amy Moon are familiar with with some of our projects that predate my time with FSEC. But I don't believe that I've seen similar mitigation in some of our previous projects.
I I believe that the shadow flicker one is very similarly captured with desert claim, which has not been constructed. And I'm not familiar enough with with our other projects to know on that. Maybe Amy Hoffkameyer knows.
Well, I do know that our reports that we receive monthly from our operating facilities that are under our oversight do say the number of shadow flicker complaints that they receive, which at this point in time, having been in operation for a number of years, there are no further complaints than there may have been at the future, at the, at the beginning.
Okay, so I guess these are are more similar to what we've done in the past.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding any of the visual mitigation or simulations? Okay. And our final resource for today is public health and safety. There's only one measure that we've proposed as most of it, most of our concerns for this resource are captured within the applicant's commitment to provide a fire response plan for FSEC consideration approval. But the mitigation measure that was added was a requirement that turbine operation be shut down in the event of a major wildfire where fire suppression aircraft may need access to areas in proximity to the project. Are there any questions on this resource of this mitigation? Mr. Young.
Yeah, one, one thing that doesn't show up here, but I I wonder if it is worth looking at a little bit would be in the event of a a major wildfire in the project area where there are heavy smoke conditions and greatly reduced visibility even during the daytime, whether it would be prudent to require that the tower, the the turbine lights, the warning lights that are normally only activated when aircraft are nearby would be on on full time. So that's maybe suggesting a a type of mitigation. maybe suggesting a type of mitigation enhancement that could provide additional safety for aircraft operations in heavy smoke conditions.
Yeah, that might be something we need to check with the FAA about because they they write the rules on
Yep.
on when the lights should be on.
Yep, agreed. And and of course, we would want to be very mindful of the of the the new state law that just got passed on that and not not run run counter to that without being very thoughtful.
Mr. Livingston?
Yeah, I I think at one point we talked about having a subject matter expert from DNR join us on this as far as from firefighting perspective. The one question I continue to have in my head is the the fire-prone areas that north face of the the Horse Heaven Hills between Prosser and Benton City, it burns frequently. And providing enough buffer turnaround space for aerial support seems to seems to be very prudent. And I don't know what that distance would be would be needed for aircraft to be able to safely make their turns and and apply fire retardant. And I I still don't know if I've seen that anywhere in the EIS or if we've have that information yet.
Could we, do we need to trap all that now? Or or could this all be sort of rolled into the development and the approval by FSEC of the of the fire plan?
Good question. Good question. And I think that let's let's consider that as we look at how we will structure our conversation in our December 20th meeting as well. Amy Hoffkameyer? Go ahead.
Oh, I was just, I I know we ran a little long. I wasn't sure if our our fire, our public health and safety subject matter expert. We don't have anybody from DNR available, but we did ask one of our contractors SMEs to be available. If he's still on the line, he might be able to speak to that question a little bit.
Oh, great.
But I can't tell if he's still on the line or not.
I'm still here. I think the one thing that you would have to look at is probably talk to, I think that would probably take talking to the local fire departments and see what they've had in the past. Most of this area, looking at it, this is not going to be forested area. It's going to be very low grasses, dryland wheat, that type of stuff. And in most of these cases, they're not going to come in and use aircraft for that because these are going to be fairly low-intensity, fast-moving fires. They're going to use backfires and that type of stuff unless there's an interface where it would be near a neighborhood or something like that. You start putting water into a plane, it is hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so when you look, look at the grasses that are burning there, it's, you're not going to get the embers off of it that you would if you've got a wildland fire in Oregon or Washington or that type of situation.
I think we do have had experience in this particular area with aircraft fire suppression.
What did they use, helicopter or planes? Were they using the helicopters or the planes?
Go ahead, Lenny.
Do we have, do we have the the ability to, for our December meeting to line up a couple of wildland fire aviation specialists who could come in and really help us take a harder look at this?
I think what we, I think that what we could do is that we can talk about how we want to structure this going forward, if we do have a recommendation to go forward that and I think it's the fire suppression plan because I don't think we're going to know the details. And so I think we can specify what we want to make sure is included there.
Yeah, that would be my advice. And again, getting local local resources that are familiar with that, I think it's probably the the better way to proceed. You know, get those subject matter experts and say, you know, given the terrain, the topography and what is there, what would be the recommended or from that standpoint, what would be the applicable strategy and tactics that would be applied? And they're going to be able to answer those questions.
I think the local, as you say, the local perspective is very important, but in Washington State, most local jurisdictions do not operate wildland firefighting aircraft. And that is, that is provided by the state and federal and then contractors to the state or federal. So I it'd be great to get a mix of of different expert perspectives to help us really resolve this.
Yeah, and the the resources in that area, these are smaller departments and looking at it and speaking yesterday. There's a lot of volunteers in that area, so you're going to be really limited in the resources, just as you're saying that you're going to get from the local. And as with most places, the the firefighting comes from a state application in most places, just like it does in Washington and California and in Oregon. So yeah, that would be my recommendation is to have their input.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further questions on public health and safety? Okay. So that's it for the EAS mitigation, the recommended mitigation. As for what to expect for the next meeting on December 20th, the council has recommended several changes to mitigation measures, both during the November 15th meeting and today. These proposed changes have been noted by staff and we will be developing updated versions that can be presented to the council prior to the next meeting on December 20th. Additionally, staff will be asking the council direction at that December meeting as to what documents the staff should prepare for the council to vote on at the January meeting. And throughout the intervening time, staff will be available to address any council questions or concerns, and we will be proactively reaching out to council members directly to to seek out again, any questions or concerns. And thank you for this very lengthy time that you have given to this project. But if you have any questions now, we can take them. Yes, Mr. Livingston?
I have a question. I just want to thank you, Sean, all the staff, contractors, everybody. It's a tremendous lift that you guys have done here and just really appreciate all the hard work. And this opportunity here in particular to finally be able to have a discussion with WDFW staff has been helpful for me. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Yep, same, same exact thing for me. Really appreciate the experts and helping us today, spending time with us, answering our questions in all the areas we covered. I think it's safe to say we had some of the more complex and challenging topics on the agenda today. And really, really appreciate the expertise that came to help us today. Thank you.
Thank you both. And again, we will be looking to have conversation on December 20th at our meeting, our regular meeting about this project and how the council wants to structure any recommendation moving forward. In the meantime, please reach out to our staff if you have topics that you want to discuss in more detail. Because I know this is in, you know, a limited period of time, an overview and a very complex set of additional mitigation measures that is recommended in the final EIS. And so our December conversation will bring that together along with the information that we have received through the adjudication to to talk about how we want to structure any sort of recommendation to the governor. So very important meeting in December and reach out with your questions to staff. And they also will be reaching out to you as well. So with that, thank you for spending several hours today on this critical conversation about the Horse Heaven Wind and Solar Project, and we will next meet on December 20th. Thanks, everyone. We're adjourned.